...of the Town Planning Board, board. Everyone please join me in the question. One way to the side of the United States of America. Into the Republic for which it stands, my nation, under God, with its liberty and justice for all. Thank you. The Town Planning Board called the hearing. Last regular meeting for Wednesday, October 20th, 2021, 6:00 p.m., Dyton Middle School. 12:50 R. Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Massachusetts, 02715. This is a public meeting being video and audio recorded for cable broadcast. Gentlemen, I'd like to entertain a motion to confirm the next meeting date of November 3rd. Motion has been made.
Second.
In second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Any extensions that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. We move on to Form A. Review discuss an act of a Form A application of 620 Spring Street LLC, 620 Spring Street, map four lot 170. Sir, if you'd please address the problem, your name and your address, please.
Yes, sir. Michael Sheehan, 276 Adams Street, Dorchester, Massachusetts. I'm the director of real estate at 620 Spring Street LLC, Washington LLC.
Right, I want to press a question, sir.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you're probably aware, I think you're all aware, the town's aware of the property's being sold, Pure Oasis. And as part of the sale, we separated a lot, which will become Lot 2, which is in the rear of the property off of Somerset Street. And this creates that lot 275 foot frontage. And it gives just a six-foot easement to Pure Oasis for service vehicles and emergency use.
Gentlemen, the board, any other questions, Mr. Sheehan? Number 620 Spring Street.
Yeah, how you doing, sir?
Hi.
So looking at the lot number two, you've got car down here. And it doesn't really jump out to me what the, what frontage you're referring to. Is that the sum of all these smaller pieces on the southwest corner of the street?
Yes, there's a, the measurement of 110, 24, which comes from the driveway. Then there's the driveway. And then there's other, those two other measurements that you mentioned, and that equals the 275 frontage.
Okay, so the frontage is that triangle shape, and then it comes into one of those markers there. I'm seeing, I'm seeing some.
Sorry, can I approach them? Just so I can see a little bit.
Yeah, sorry. So I'm looking at that, a little smaller here. So looking at, so you just call this out, right? This is this one here. You've got this shape, and assuming this is somebody else's property.
Correct.
Is this the delineation here for Lot 2?
That's correct, yeah. For triangles and the right, yes.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you.
So in total area, that's the Lot 2, it's a 298, 625 square feet.
That's correct, yes. It's about 6.85 acres.
Got it, okay. And then the remainder is stay?
And the remainder of the lot, which is Lot 1, stays built with the sale.
Okay, I understand. Okay, yeah, that was my only question, is what the actual delineation was? And then you backed up against a lot of law, and so that's your back lot there?
That's correct.
Okay.
That land will stay as industrial land, sir?
Yeah, the intention right now temporarily is we used it to store vehicles, contractual vehicles, that's what the owners do. And right now, their intent is to keep it again, just to store, store power equipment, and then not do store power operations.
For the, for the Peavy Brothers?
That's correct, sir.
You know there's a buffer zone with the river there?
Yes, we're aware of this one, but, uh, buffer zone, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. President.
Mr. President? Is that the only parcel that Peavy Brothers plans on keeping?
Uh, we kept two other parcels.
The park across the street?
No, the park goes with the sale, but across from the park, there's another lot.
I'm familiar. I don't know if you know who I am, but.
Do we speak a law?
You've spoken to me on the phone several times.
Yeah, yeah, we have that, yeah. We kept that. And then the lot also behind the older industrial building. It's a very small lot.
Out back, behind the building?
Yeah, yeah, it's a, it's a non-billable lot, it's a very small lot. I think the neighbors had a battle.
Are you keeping that lot also, sir?
Yeah, the, uh, yes, we are, yeah.
Okay.
I wasn't any interested in that lot.
Okay, well, I'm also.
We, no, we can talk again, I know we're.
We'll talk again.
Uh, get busy, but we'll, we'll, we'll talk to you again.
Thank you. But, but the, the park is going along with the sale to Pure Oasis?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, yeah. Cause that's a historical part of town?
Right.
And those parks, I'm sure that you know how they came about?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
The board members, any further questions of the applicant? I'm going to entertain a motion to accept Form A application for 620 Spring Street LLC, 620 Spring Street, map four lot 170. So, motion has been made, is there a second?
Second.
And second, and any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Any extensions, that motion carries? Thank you, Mr. Sheehan.
Thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Can I leave the mile on the, the, the signature? Sure. Thank you, sir.
We assign everyone. Mr. Sheehan? Mr. Sheehan?
Yes, sir.
Any need more further information, Mr. President, or office manager?
I'm sorry.
Any need more further, please, do you have any further comments?
Nice to meet you, too.
Good gentleman, we're also going to move on to, uh, agenda item number 4A2, which is review discuss an act of a Form A application of 430 Old Somerset Avenue, map four lot five dash one. Is the applicant present? Good evening, sir. Please state your name and your address, please.
My name is Michael Farias. I'm 430 Old Somerset Avenue, Lot 8.
Before we go, sir, would you discuss your application?
The application is, I'm just adding a piece of land into my, uh, my lot, that's it, one acre. I took it after my mama worship passed away, so I added my, uh, my lot, that's all. Not building anything, I've just.
This one is just to inform you, sir, there are several old blocks of limitations that's in the packet that states that the town in 1988 had discussed with zoning board feels that they wanted that lane to be with, to be known wider than 20 feet, it's narrow. We want to make sure that's sort of in particular.
That's what they gave me, they approved on 20 feet. That's why I'm.
So why, why do two at least 20 feet? So wider than 20 feet?
Any?
Sorry, I thought you said the opposite.
Any other members of the board have any questions of the applicant?
My question is, why are we doing, you're doing that and not frontage?
Because I already built my house in back. The house has been built there for 32 years. And I'm just adding because my mama passed away. And I'm just adding a nick of a land into my property, make a, make a, so make sure the money gets closer to me, in case something happens someday.
So you have no intentions on building anything?
No.
Yeah, I guess I have a follow-up question to that as well. I, I get that you're adding the acre. Um, I'm just curious, uh, why the odd shape? Why is it not straight in the back? Why is it not straight?
Because years ago, one day, the fisher, the surveyor came in, he made it on the angle. So I told him, you know, to get him straight, that's all. So that way, it's straight over here.
Oh, the whole, the whole land is, is that an acre?
Uh, that one, yes.
Oh, okay, yeah, I see the common street, okay. So the whole thing is at an angle, so you're straight the outside, it's going, it's out. And that's why that is at an angle like that, okay.
Any other questions, should the members of the board? Mike, I've read through your application, Mr. Farias. Very thorough. It says, you say, it's just an addition of land, uh, to fit all the requirements under our bylaws. So gentlemen, this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to approve this Form A application of 430 Old Somerset Avenue, map four lot 170.
I'll make that motion.
Motion has been made. In second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Any extensions, that motion carries? Thank you, Mr. Farias. If you have any big word that you need, feel free to reach out to our office manager.
I'm going to sign the, uh, the, that way you can make a move. I'll attend you. It's not that we don't like you.
Everything is now complete. We've, uh, built, and, uh, the two roads, uh, Dyton Woods Circle and Dyton Woods Road, that serve the subdivision. We built it to the requirements of the town. The town's, um, peer review engineer has certified that the road's been built. And had one small comment regarding the, um, as-built plan we submitted, we, that he sent a letter, uh, to me this Tuesday, uh, at the beginning of September, we submitted a revised as-built plan. That's done, and we're hoping to get your recommendation for the town meeting to, uh, accept the roads as a public way, these two roads as a public way.
Thank you. I know Mrs. Zola, this has been a long, hard week for you. And it's been quite a long time, but, you know, you had the opportunity to get it squared away up there. I have physically driven through that subdivision myself. Everything looks, uh, pretty neat and buttoned up. Members of the board, I know that, um, as their attorney has stated, you know, we've had our, received our comments from our engineer. And, uh, as-built, do as-built events have been, as we requested, and everything seems to be in order. Any questions from members of the board to the applicant?
Is it the intent to, uh, if this passes tonight, to go to the special town meeting to accept it?
Yes, we, we've asked that, uh, the planning board recommend that it be, uh, accepted at the next town meeting, which I believe is at the beginning of November?
Correct.
November 1st.
Yeah, it's already on the line.
I, I didn't have any concern, I just read, I read Peter Williams' letter, and, uh, I was satisfied with, uh, what he reviewed, what he wrote back to us.
Mr. Figueroa? Wish you a wisdom, good. Michael Queen? Gentlemen, do you have any further comments on the entertaining a motion to approve the Dyton Woods Road and Dyton Woods Road Circle roadway acceptance? So, motion has been made. In second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions, that motion carries?
Thank you.
There are, gentlemen, just any talking?
Is there anything that I can, uh, provide to the board or town meeting in advance of the November 1 hearing, or we just go with what we've got?
Sometimes it's always best to have a representative.
Oh, be there.
To be, you know, just to answer questions on the floor. But, uh, this is pretty much procedural right now at this point.
Thank you very much.
If you need anything, please feel free to reach out to our office manager this afternoon.
Yeah, and thank you, Mr. Sheehan. Really appreciate it, thank you.
You're welcome. Gentlemen, take care.
Thanks a lot. Have a good night.
Gentlemen, we move on to agenda item number 14, number two, that's the zoning plan, I remember, section six, definitions. I'm going to entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Is there a second? In second. Any further discussion or open the public hearing? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose. Any extensions, that motion carries? This time, I'm going to read the legal notice that was printed in the Todd Daily Gazette. And this is the legal notice of Dyton Planning Board, October 20th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m., Dyton Middle School, 1250 R. Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Massachusetts. In accordance with the provisions of Chief Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 5, the Dyton Planning Board will hold a public hearing to review and receive public comments concerning proposed amendments to the Dyton zoning bylaws adopted June 7th of 2021. The proposed amendments are identified below in terms of subject matter. The item designations given have been assigned by the planning board for identification purposes only. Item numbers will subsequently be established by the selected for the warrants. Item number one, kennel, residential zoning bylaw, to see if the town will vote to amend the town of Dyton zoning bylaws, section six, definitions, kennel residential, by deleting in its entirety and replacing with a new definition, or taking any action thereon. A copy of the complete proposed text is available at www.dyton-ma.gov/government-planningboard/index.php, or at the office of the town clerk or the planning board of 979 Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass, during regular business hours. Any person interested in the wish to rehearse should appear at this time and be placed designated for the public hearing. Signed, Dyton Planning Board Chairman Timothy F. Ryan. Do we have a representative here who would like to speak on this bylaw? Mr. Pires? Wait, Mr. Pires? Sure, if you would, please. Uh, please identify yourself again, sir.
Yeah, Dr. Pires, 7223 Main Lane, Dyton.
Name your affiliation.
Amendment of the Dyton Board Health.
Thank you, sir. You may be started.
Yeah, I'm going to read the, uh, amendment, proposed amendment first. Kennel residential, a pack or collection of four or more dogs that are owned or kept under single ownership or personally used and enjoyed, may be owned in a residential or business district, subject to the approval of the Board of Health and Animal Control Officer. This also includes a personal kennel, as defined in Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 140, Section 136A. Note, this section does not apply to properties of three dogs or less. Said residential kennels approved by the Board of Health and Animal Control Officer shall be inspected annually. The Board of Health shall promulgate regulations governing said process for approving and inspecting a residential kennel as so defined in accordance with applicable Massachusetts General Laws. Appendix A, Use Regulation Schedule of the Town Dyton zoning bylaws shall be amended to reflect these changes. Uh, for the benefit of the board and whoever may be watching this evening, um, first, this article was written, uh, by the town administrator, the town clerk, myself and the animal control officer. One of the problems that we were having is as far as a residential kennel, um, every special permit was required for a residential kennel. This removes that requirement, because we were finding that a lot of people, because of the cost of, uh, seeking a special permit, uh, we're not getting kennels of kennel licenses at all, nor were they licensing their dog. So at this point, this removes that requirement of a special permit. However, the process still has a hearing involved with it, except the hearing will be now given by the, uh, be, I mean, sorry, uh, be completed by the Board of Health at no charge. So when people were spending hundreds of dollars to seek a special permit with the zoning Board of Appeals, that eliminates that. There will be a requirement for, we have to make up the regulations, there will still be a requirement for border notifications, but not by certified mail. That will be done by regular mail with a certificate of mailing, which will probably cost a homeowner maybe a dollar or so, whatever the prices are now at the post office, um, for a border notification. So basically, this is pretty straightforward. I'm hearing the burden was $750 in that area for a hearing. So now it's going to be a free hearing, uh, because the Board of Health is not going to charge, uh, for the hearing. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have. So I'd be happy to answer any questions the board may have.
Do we have any departmental comments at this time? I'm going to move on to any comments from members of the planning board. Screen. Mr. Jalen Woods.
The only question I have is, are you reducing the number of animals that are required to get a kennel permit?
State law requires four or more requires a kennel permit.
Four or more.
And that's the state law?
Yes.
I'm good with that, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Figueroa. I'm sorry, Mr. Pires?
No, nothing here.
Mr. Pires, I'm all set. This has been a long arduous road again for many of us to get this kennel bylaw squared away because I was working on this along with you and of course, our, you know, animal control officer and our building commissioner. And I'm glad to see that we're finally going to have the proper wording.
Yeah, the first hour of the meeting was, as you mentioned, was drafted by yourself, myself, the building commissioner, and town administrator. It was four of us at the time that did it. And lo and behold, at the time, I guess we didn't figure that, you know, these special permit fee is way too excessive for somebody looking for a residential kennel. So I think this will straighten that out and just a reminder, let everybody know, your dog should be licensed. There's a $50 a day fine for not licensing your animals. If you have more than three animals, if you have four animals, the kennel permit licenses all those four animals. So it's a moderate version of licensing channels. So that being said, there's no more questions? I'll leave you gentlemen to your business.
Anybody have any public input on this matter? Hearing none, I'm going to entertain a motion to recommend the amendment of the town Dyton zoning bylaw, Section 6, definition kennel residential as presented or with edits, if any, at the November 1st special town meeting on the November 1st.
I'll make the motion.
Motion has been made.
Yeah, second.
And second. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Pires. We'll see you at the town meeting. So this time we move on to agenda item number 4B, number 3. That's Grasshopper Energy, map 5, Lot 31, Zero Brook Street, map 16, Lot 28, special permit site plan, major modification request. I'm going to entertain a motion at this time to open the public hearing. Motion has been made open the hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and set into open the public hearing. Any discussion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries. Johnson, this time before we begin, I'm going to entertain a motion to accept the proposal for the engineering peer review services for Zero Brook Street from Green International Affiliates Incorporated, in the amount of $2,000 dated October 7th of 2021. Motion has been made. Is there a second? It's by Mr. Figueroa.
A second.
It's second by Mr. Cunha. Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions? That motion carries. I'm going to turn it over to the applicant. If you would please identify yourself by your name. At this time, I'm going to read the public notice. This is the legal notice of Dyton Planning Board, dated October 20th, 2021, at 6:00 p.m. at the Dyton Middle School, 1250 R Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Massachusetts, 06715. Notice is here by giving the Dyton Planning Board conduct a public hearing on the modification of a special permit and site plan review by GH TJ A03, out of city parentheses, Grasshopper Energy, to include the addition of a Sungrove's Best Energy Storage System, reconfiguration of the array racking layout, addition of two new utility poles and adjustment of the pole configuration and as-built modifications to the installed box culvert at Zero Brook Street being shown as a successive map, Lot 16, Lot 28, pursuant to sections 4600, 5300, and 5400 of the Dyton zoning bylaws. Copies of the plans are available for a special Dyton clerk's office or planning board's office at 979 Somerset Avenue, Dyton, Mass during normal business hours or online at www.dyton-ma.gov/government/planningboard/index.php. Signed, Dyton Planning Board Chairman Timothy F. Ryan. At this time, I am going to turn over the floor to the applicants for the applicant's presentation.
Thank you so much, Chairman Ryan, members of the board, and participants. Thank you for this public hearing on the site plan and special permit modification.
Please identify yourself by your name.
Yes. My name is Victoria Dallas. I'm an attorney with Sanion Associates PC, 15 Cape Lane in Brewster, and I'm here representing Grasshopper, the developer, Grasshopper Energy Corporation.
Thank you.
And again, thank you for this public hearing on the site plan and special permit modification request. With me here this evening is Jonathan Perceau, the COO of Grasshopper. We also have Grace Russell, the Director of Project Management, and we also have Ahmed Hafiz, the Director, the Director of the PC Management at Grasshopper for questions that may be asked. In addition, we have engineers with us here. We have Christopher King of Atlantic Design, who has background and history in the project and will be presenting. And in addition, we also have Nick Fassandola of Level Design Group, who prepared, the current engineer, who prepared the application materials. And then we also have Ian Calmore of STEM, and STEM is supplying the proposed energy storage system, also available to ask questions. So as you know, the approved site plan and the accompanying special permit were granted back in early 2019 at the design phase of the project. And as the project has proceeded into the construction phases, some modifications are proposed, which brings us here today. You did outline before major areas of modification in the introduction. Thank you. And I'm going to let Chris King get into the details of those modifications and also provide a little bit of the history and the background. As we proceed with tonight's presentation, we will welcome questions and feedback, including of the butters and other participants. We do want to be very proactive in responding to questions to the extent that there are questions that we would need to follow up on, we will be pleased to promptly do so. Lastly, before I pass the presentation to Chris King, we very much would like to schedule a site meeting at the solar facility with the board, if the board might be amenable. And there, we would like to have other stakeholders as well who are interested, specifically the fire chief, who indicated he would be amenable, the building commissioner, and the chairwoman of the stormwater committee as well. If that might be something tonight that the board could consider, we would very much welcome some potential dates and times to take that forward. So with that, I'm going to pass it over to Chris King to give a little bit of the history and also run through the modifications in the application.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Christopher King with Atlantic Design Engineers. As noted, we were the original permitting engineer when the project was approved by the board in 2019. I know that most of the members, I don't recognize you, you knew since that project was approved. I'll try to be as concise and linear as I can, but I thought it was important just to bring the current board up to speed and just reiterate some things that the project had undergone during the original permitting process, which was basically a series of redesigns, which again, were approved in the December dated plan set, the last plan set that the planning board had seen. And those design changes basically reduced the project in various areas, whether it be through the conservation commission permitting, which we successfully completed, as well as through you folks. Obviously, two different sets of standards when we were before you folks. And I do recognize the butters here, Mr. Horner, the Bosa Lays, and then Mr. Silva as well. We did have sidewalks. There were conversations had between some of the butters as far as some of the setbacks that we're going to be providing. And, you know, I think it's important to note that the modification was being requested before you this evening. Still honor those setbacks. The panels are no closer to, particularly to Mr. Horner's sideline that we had agreed to move the panels out of a certain area. It was 80 feet. We came up with somewhere in between. We met in the middle. I know the Bosa Lays were not a proponent of the project from the get-go and probably still are not, but we came up with a distance that exceeds what the town requires per your bylaw. It maximized it to the maximum extent practicable along the front edge. And then again, understanding the nature of the existing vegetation out there is, you know, primarily deciduous. There is some coniferous species throughout, but there's not a lot of understory growth at high, particularly at high height. And so we agreed to kind of beef up the existing tree line that was going to remain, if you will, to try to beef up the understory in addition to planting more localized screening along the northern edge adjacent to the edge of the project, really again, to screen the project per the site plan approval criteria. We worked really hard to really solidify a footprint, if you will. So as a permitting engineer, you know, this type of projects go through various phases of design. And depending on the discipline, you know, I'm usually the first with boots on the ground, whether it be through survey, you know, other than obviously the owner doing their due diligence, but from a design professional, we do the survey and the site design. And the utility at that point in time has only contributed, they only do a kind of a first run due diligence. They know where the project is. They have an idea of their infrastructure in the area. And based on your anticipated generation, which we don't know because we haven't secured our land permits for you folks, they give us a rough idea of what they want to see at the project doorstep to make the point of interconnection, if that makes sense. And so as a permitting engineer, again, my task is to work with the information that's provided at the early stages of the project and best guess and best represent to you folks for the required approvals so that you can make a decision. It's not uncommon, it's frankly, you know, just about every solar project, with the exception of one out of the over 30 that I've worked on in the past two or three years, the final design of the solar project is a little bit different than what you see on the plans that are presented before you. For instance, technology changes, as you know, and as evident with this project, for multiple different reasons, they take a while to build from the time that you approve them, especially nowadays, considering some of the recent circumstances. And so technology changes, whether it be panel type, panel availability, whether or not, you know, battery technology has come up to speed yet, that makes sense. So there are a lot of things that go into the redesign of the project. At the very least, the racking system that we show, again, we try to do our best guess and we use something that we think is representative of the way that they rotate the panel, whether it be portrait or landscape. We come up with a row-to-row spacing based on site slopes and self-shading factors. But at the end of the day, the person who's going to be building and operating and comes out and sends people out there, a lot smarter than I am, to take a closer look and really maximize the efficiency. They pick out exactly what panel, what blockage, what rotation, what tilt angle, do site-specific shading studies. They may find an area on site where they're only allowed to cut a certain amount of trees based on our approval with you folks. So there may be an area where they realize they can't cut those trees because of my approvals. Well, I'm not going to build panels in this small area. It doesn't make sense to, for whatever reason. So that's, that is very common these days with just about every project. And the result is a project that, we call it re-racking the site. And it comes up with a specific racking system that is designed for the specific panel that's going to be used. The inverters are selected, they're spaced or placed on the site in accordance with what the final system is. The racking system is also predicated on geotechnical information that typically isn't acquired until after the land use permits are acquired. So all of this stuff goes on behind the scenes and really ultimately, it's up to not only the construction design team, but also working with a permitting engineer, someone like myself, to understand the parameters that were agreed to with the initial approval. So that any change that we make to the racking is basically internal to the footprint that was approved. Doesn't require any additional clearing. Doesn't place the panels any closer to the surrounding residents, particularly ones where we agreed that we would maintain a certain distance. And it is in harmony and captures the spirit of, you know, the original approval of the special permit, which was, you know, again, granted by the planning board in 2019. And so, you know, that being said, we're before you this evening with really, you know, initially when I was contacted, we had the idea of submitting for a minor modification. And it was made very clear to us, and I think, you know, again, I apologize for the miscommunication. I think there was a level of miscommunication. And I think now we're, I think it's important to know we're following the process that's been basically laid out before us. I understand that's a process that you're most comfortable with. You know, I think we grouped somewhat, you know, we would normally deal with as a permitting engineer is a minor modification going back to a planning board. But they've all been grouped together as a major modification. And that's really due to the implementation of the energy storage systems that we're asking for approval as well. And so as noted, some of the design changes are mechanical and equipment-specific that were really already reviewed and approved by you folks. Some of them are utility-driven. Again, as noted, the utility only does a first-level due diligence when I'm involved in the project. After the project gets its land use permits, it reaches another level in the smart portal, they call it. And that basically gives the utility company, basically, you know, the ability or the comfort to go out and send their field engineers to the site, take an exact look at what's going on, what's being composed, and they refine any kind of, they call it a one-line drawing, which is, you know, typically included as part of the original application package. And that shows the location of the utility-owned equipment and then the transition to the customer-owned equipment that ultimately is connected underground to the equipment pads. So again, during the initial part of permitting, sensitive to the area and some of the issues that were being brought up during the planning board process, we worked to try to limit the amount of poles at the front door. The utility company came and they took a look at what we were proposing. And we were proposing to have different, we're proposing to have multiple pieces of equipment on the same pole in some instances. The utility company came, they took a look at the site and, you know, I'm not the utility company, can't speak for them, but based on their visit, they determined that, you know, we originally had five poles shown. They wanted seven because they didn't want, for workman's safety reasons, they didn't want shared equipment on the same pole. They didn't want a guy on a pole that did with two pieces of equipment, maybe one rifle in front of his body, working on a second piece. So they've asked for a second pole and they've also asked for us to spread the pole spacing out. So, you know, we worked with the utility company and on the plans that were submitted as part of the modification, the poles are shown and we've actually moved them to the opposite side of the road, which will be further away from the residences. The additional poles are outside of the buffer zone. And, you know, again, it's something that, it's, you know, essentially utility-driven, if you will. We've submitted some email correspondence confirming that. I know that always helps. But that's, you know, the explanation behind the need for the additional two poles, if you will, and then the relocation of the poles across the road. As you know, there was a pole rate at the project entrance as well. We had initially envisioned relocating that. Again, once the utility had eyes on the ground and they saw the angle point more than likely, they really didn't want to mess with that pole. And so we had slightly reconfigured the culvert, we made it a little bit smaller. And I think it's worth noting that the fire chief has already been out to the site after it's been installed to make sure that he's happy with the configuration and the installation of it for a of it for emergency access purposes. So again, I think that's somewhat of a minor modification, if you will, coupled with the racking itself, that, you know, we're hoping that could be separated, if you will, from the battery issue, because these are really just kind of minor mechanical modifications that are really consistent with the original approval. And the last of which being, again, there's been a reconfiguration to the equipment pad area. Again, we best guess what type of equipment and how many pieces they're going to need and put a concrete pad in the middle of the solar field. This needed a little bit different of a configuration, but a lot of it is made out of crushed stone. I believe there's details provided in the package for that. And then these boxes surrounding the equipment pad area are basically containers. And right now, again, every project's different. This particular project, instead of having a bank of inverters that are outdoors with each separate panel or cabinet for each inverter, or what you hear of string inverters with the inverters are all located at the end of, you know, every three or four rows, these actually have the inverters inside of containers, which also obviously helps with noise reduction as well. But these containers are designed as well to house batteries, but the type of system it is, if batteries, you know, hopefully we're able to provide the information, allow the board to approve the batteries, but in the event that batteries aren't there, these containers will remain the sole purpose of housing the inverters. So again, I know Mr. Palmary's here. If there's anything that we can provide, you know, we're expecting peer review comments, expecting comments from additional departments from within the town. We look forward to responding to those because we're, you know, confident we could provide any information and answer any questions. I don't, hoping there are no issues. I know we still have to hear from the board members and also the butters, but, you know, as the applicant has communicated, you know, they're under project-driven deadlines as well. And so we'd like to, you know, in the interest of everyone's time involved here, because I think we've put together a comprehensive team in that. As Victoria had noted, we have someone from STEM here, the battery manufacturer, answering questions. We also have Dick Fasendola from the Little Design Group, who is the engineer who created the construction drawings, if you will, and prepared the package before you this evening. Here, just to kind of reintroduce the project, go through some of the history, hopefully answer any questions you may have as well. But, you know, again, we're looking for maybe some separation if the board would allow that between the two issues, if you will, where we really have a set of changes that I think qualify as a minor modification. Understanding the batteries that are separate issue, and we were going to continue to work with not only the planning board, but as importantly, I think, the fire chief, to make sure we follow through the major modification process, which requires notification of the butters. And so really, you know, asking the board to maybe approve something as a minor modification in this forum is above and beyond the standards which you require per your bylaws. So hopefully that would make you comfortable, if you're willing or amenable, to do that. If you, again, if you have any questions, we understand there's going to be ongoing coordination, and just so you know, the, you know, the minor modifications aside, you know, if you are able to approve those, the building inspector still needs to come up to the site. We're looking for a sign-off when the project is approved, minus the batteries. You know, that is really the crux of our schedule. And so allowing the board to hopefully view those separately as minor modifications and vote on them as soon as you're comfortable doing so would be greatly appreciated on our end, as we feel we've constructed the project as originally approved, then minor modified by the board, allowing the building inspector to sign off, understanding that we're still running a major modification to come do the battery installation, which I think it's also important to note that the system needs to be charged in order to do the battery installation. So we're just trying to get the cart back behind the horse on this, and the minor modification would help us do that to allow the building inspector to sign off on a complete project. And furthermore, the batteries also require a secondary, even almost tertiary level of permitting at that point, where they go before the fire chief under the Mass State Fire Code, there are specific October amendments in 2019, and speak to battery storage on solar projects, and additional permitting will be required through the fire department, and we're prepared to do that. And we've outlined how we're compliant in the package you have before you, with not only the national, but also this Mass State Fire Code. So again, you know, just, I'll end it because I know the Red Sox are still playing, but we would like this opportunity tonight, we thought it important to come and apologize for the miscommunication, let you guys know where the project was, where it is, and where it's going. We're following the process outlined. We'd like a little flexibility to maybe separate some of the issues as minor, separate of the batteries, independent of the batteries, it doesn't matter what happens with the batteries, these other things need to happen to make the project basically operate, you know, as approved, if you will. And our view is that they're minor, some of them being utility-driven, some of them more changes realized during the engineering and procurement and buying materials, selecting materials process. So, and also we'd like to hear again, if the board, we understand that you're still waiting for your town entities and your peer reviewer to issue comments, but if there's anything we can bet out this evening that the board has, questions or concerns, we'd like the ability to have a full-time period to respond to those so that by the time we get to the next hearing, hopefully we're in a position where we're giving you good information, give you information that proves that these things are safe, they're normal, they're all over the state, you know. And it's something that is certainly within the realm of what you described as a modification to a site plan, whether it be minor or major, depending on which of the changes we're talking about. And as well as important, we listen to what the butters have to say as well. And, you know, again, you know, I'd be looking for some guidance based on past experience from the board as to if there's anything brought up, exactly what you would, you know, would be looking for additional information or clarification on if there's something that's brought up above and beyond what you folks do as a board, or whatever I already explained this evening. Your time.
I do have a question. I personally asked for this and I've received any information from anyone, but this is what we got, is that the movement of the telephone poles on the site itself, I keep hearing that National Bridge has approved, they call that. Where's your engineering? We've seen no engineering documents from National Bridge that says that those poles internally could be moved. Secondly, there was supposed to be some documentation that came down about the battery storage fire suppression system. No PDF was sent down. I have seen no PDF. I prefer that the board be able to read that PDF first, even before it's sent to our fire chief. Because we will send it along to the fire chief, of course. These are just documents that the board needs to look at and be seen in order for us to make an informed decision on a major or a minor modification to the site. Now, I just want to state that, looking at the plans, if the members of the board, I will please them, and members of the audience, if you look at the plans as per se, the original plans that were presented to us showed no battery storage units on that site at all. It was specifically photovoltaic panels throughout the whole system. Now, what they've done is they've asked for a major modification to include battery storage, which you see, which would be in the southeast, oh, I'm sorry, the southwest corner of the site itself. So what they've done is that those battery storage units, they want to include the panels that are located on that position on the site, have been now moved to the infiltration basin, okay? But they're not encroaching on the basin. If you look at the plans, it's delineated on the plans. So generally, you'll see that on the plans itself. Now, I'm going to open it up to any questions that the members of the board have of the applicant before we move on to their site engineer, Mr. Fasendola, who we have him come up to make the presentation.
Yeah, I've got a couple of questions. So, thank you for putting all the technical test data in the back of this document. I appreciate it going through and seeing all the runaway temperature testing that was done on the batteries, batteries units themselves. So I read through that, it was very detailed, which you had in on there. And just to reiterate what Mr. Ryan said, when I went through the package that was provided, the turnkey station system manual, and I went online trying to find this myself, I couldn't locate it. But in the, oh, sorry. I was curious on that. Thank you. All right, so in the, in the turnkey manual, in the fire suppression, missing fire suppression information to be specifically talking about is if you look in section three dot three dot five of the packet you provided, it's page ten of that manual, there's a paragraph that says "fire suppression design," and it says that a control box and automatic fire suppression device is installed inside of the station, on and on, but at the very end it says "please refer to the fire suppression chapter for the detailed operation." Unfortunately, that wasn't included, and that's what we'd like to get a copy of. And I went, I went to the manufacturer's website, and I couldn't, I couldn't find the, just the information sheet, and I couldn't find this manual on the website. So if it's something you guys have that you can provide, that'd be great. But I was, I was very satisfied with the technical data they provided, the battery packs. And I agree that, yeah, the other departments blocked it away in as well.
Would they have just the standard MSDS on that?
No, there's actually very detailed runaway temperature testing on the back of this document. They probably have this large packet. They went through and they looked at individual cell, I'm concerned with these lithium batteries is that they can, they can, they can become small bombs, is really what it turns into. But the way these packets are built, they tested them in a large battery bank, and they, they took one of the battery bank cells out, replaced it with a, pretty much a heating unit, and they heated that up to the flash temperature to see what happened to the other ones around it. And it didn't run away. It self-protected. So, it's kind of interesting, and it's, it's in there, the report is very detailed in the back of this. So I was very satisfied with that, but there is a lot of information in there about, number one, the fire suppression design, but there's also a situation where fire suppression systems can malfunction, and that's where the fire department gets involved. There's a lot of information in this packet about fire department coordination, required equipment, required firefighting techniques. That's a lot of that's in here, and I would have to imagine that our fire chief would need this information and anything else he needs, he needs to go through this himself to make sure he's satisfied. But, that was it. Thank you.
Your question to members of board, the applicant?
I'd feel a little more comfortable if the fire chief and the building inspector was here before we discuss any more of this, and I really would not like to talk about the batteries tonight unless the building inspector and the fire chief is present.
Sure, we can appreciate that, and by all means, we don't anticipate closing this evening. We understand that there are other entities that are going to come back.
I have a problem separating the two from major and minor on the poles, but as far as the batteries, my opinion is it's a major modification, and I don't feel comfortable talking about it, because I don't want to talk about it tonight and then talk about the same thing again.
Sure.
And we need to have the fire chief here, we need to have the building inspector here. I'm not happy to support the foundation for these battery storage units without authorization. You know, we just didn't fall off the turnip truck, you know?
Sure, no, and, you know, again, these are not only battery storage units, but they also house the inverters and protect them from the elements.
Was not in the plans.
No, and again, that was, you know, I referenced miscommunication, and that's plural. I think there were a couple steps that could have certainly been approached a little bit better, and I'd like to, like to think that we've learned our lesson from that and have, you know, tucked in line here and are following the process and being as transparent as we can with you folks. And, you know, that's why, you know, we're obviously before you this evening for the major modification. We'd like to get you out on site to take a look at everything, if that helps. I appreciate the comment on the.
Do you have a date in mind, sir, for this?
You know, the project team can make themselves available. I don't know if anyone on the team has a specific.
Next week is not good. I'm going to be away this week. I don't want to be there.
I don't, what's your next hearing? Is it the first?
Could be November.
Wednesday in November, right? So that would be the following week. The idea would be to try to have it before, I don't know if this week is soon enough?
We could do it. No problem.
I mean, again, we'd like to, I mean, we don't think there are too many underlying issues. I've noted everything, the additional information that you folks would like, but I'd like to get the site visit done, get you the additional information, and then hopefully receive comments from the applicable entities, be able to respond, and then come back for the next hearing, and then be able to talk about the batteries specifically. If it's appropriate, I would, I don't know if the board is willing to vote on whether they would entertain separating the minor modification this evening and rendering a decision on just that component. But again, you know, not to be a broken record, but that is integral in keeping the project moving forward to even get to the battery stage. But again, notwithstanding those, the, whether this project has batteries or not, we're still looking for the two additional poles, a slight adjustment to the culvert to allow us to keep the existing pole that were all, you know, driven by the utility company. And the reconfiguration to the equipment area, again, I understand that this configuration wasn't shown on the set approved, but the set approved, you know, only called it an equipment pad. We thought there could, the chance that they could have batteries, but at that point in time, as a permitting engineer, we're not experts in that realm, and we can only guess how many batteries and where they're going to go. I do know that the changes to that area are all still centrally located in the back of the site, if you will, as far away as, you know, possible, at least from a construction standpoint. The, the storage units, they're not pad-mounted with extra concrete, they're actually just post-driven, and as noted, they're in an area where we previously show panels, so it's basically an even swap from any kind of stormwater standpoint or anything like that. And again, these are containers that are housing the inverters, so, you know, batteries aside, these are still going to remain to house those inverters, so we still need your approval for those containers. We're just not seeking approval to put batteries in those containers as part of the minor, the minor modification request.
It's not going to happen with me, sir.
My question is, do you have, the inverters are going in here, but if the batteries get approved, where are the inverters going to be? In there still?
Yes, they're, they cohabitate in the same box, if you will.
So everything is going to be in there, so now we fit everything into one, one area?
Yeah.
Correct. If we do not approve the batteries, what happens? What, how are you guys going to continue on? What's, what's going to happen?
The protocol is.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry, sir, please identify yourself instead of the board.
Sure.
Thank you.
My name is Jonathan Pruside, and the chief commercial officer for Grasshopper Energy. So, sir, to answer your question, how could we, if the batteries are not approved, what would happen to the site? Effectively, nothing changes, meaning that we would still ask for all of these changes the, in, in terms of the, what we're terming. This evening is the minor modifications. The storage containers would, would only hold the inverters, and we would operate the site without the batteries.
Were they on the plans?
Not, not the original set of plans. There was presented to the town, like the planning board, they were working on the second set of plans that was never voted on and approved by this board at any time. Now, I'm going to reserve comment at this time myself, and I'm going to open the floor to our attorney, Mr. Tom, if you'd like to speak at this time.
Yeah, I'm just looking over at Jay Taylor, and maybe she's right in the mic. I'm looking at this from a procedural standpoint, not in the substance, so we have one application for a major site plan that includes a few items that weren't part of the second option. So the question, threshold question is how are we bifurcate that within a public hearing that's already open? So, I suppose there, I suppose there's a way to do it, whether it requires some additional paperwork from you all is, is a question we can answer. So I look at it from those perspectives, and the board probably needs to, needs time to consider that. Anyway, my guess is that would require just a little bit of time. I do, so on the pole reconfiguration, that seems pretty straightforward enough in my mind. The culvert one, I'm a little unsure, because I don't know where particularly the dividing line between. line between the stormwater board and this board's peer review began and ended, whether that was kind of a redundant review. The original decision did have some references to stormwater. There are some changes to that structure that may affect some grading issues. I don't know, I'm an expert, but I want to, you know, I don't want to chime in on the merits there, but it seems that even that issue, even though it could be very minor and significant, still needs an engineer to take a peek at it. So I don't know if this board generally completely defers on those issues to the stormwater crew or if it's something that we do as part of your general review too. It does seem that there was at least some review during your initial run through this. So, you know, I can't say for sure. But from a procedural standpoint, I'm not exactly sure how we issued two decisions for one application. You know, if the board was happy enough to do that, I'm sure we could figure it out from a legal standpoint, but it's a little awkward rather than having received two different applications, one for minor, one for major. So aside from that, I'm interested in seeing the peer review the same as the board. I just went through a long solar project application in neighboring Rehoboth where the battery issue took a little bit of time to resolve in terms of the imposition of conditions that provided some additional assurances to the community so that there were the necessary redundancies in terms of protection with respect to fire and other issues. As we know, the materials presented, there is risk there.
Mr. Bassinol, if you'd like to come forward, give a brief presentation, please.
Sure, just for the record, Mr. Bassinol, the design group, we prepared the plan currently in front of the board this evening. I just wanted to speak to the culvert issue real quick, just to kind of give a little history on that. We did receive a minor modification approval from this board, I believe in January, to reduce the width of the culvert and modify its position to accommodate a, we went from a 24-foot wide culvert to a 20-foot wide culvert to accommodate an existing utility pole. I believe most of the members were here for that presentation and for that hearing. The only modification that's essentially associated with the culvert is that instead of concrete wing walls, they've been modified to riprap slope. In this, we can discuss this site in detail at the sitewalk, as you'll be able to see at the site meeting. It's not a very large grade differential in that area, and, you know, installing the concrete wing walls would be a little excessive. So it essentially serves the same purpose, having the riprap slope at the edge of the culvert in these areas, in those areas there. But that's the major change associated with the culvert. And as we were providing this updated plan set, I wanted to make sure that everything was current and there was no deviations from what's actually being built today and what's shown on this plan. So that's why we include that in the package tonight.
So basically, the calculations remain the same as what it was.
That is correct. And we worked closely with the Stormwater Committee on the culvert installation. There were multiple site visits and lots of discussion regarding the installation of the culvert. We coordinated with Public Safety to ensure that the fire truck, the fire chief wanted to bring on the site could safely make it over the culvert, safely exit the site, make all the appropriate turns, and that was satisfying.
Do we have any questions, Mr. Bassinol?
No.
Very departmental comments for the evening. Mr. Goulart, who's the board, identify yourself with your name and your affiliation, please.
Nancy Goulart, Chairman, Stormwater Committee, Representative for the Board of Select into that committee. I just am trying to clarify exactly what we're talking about tonight. First of all, reference to the drive, the entrance over the culvert? I never heard of 24 feet. What was presented to the Stormwater Committee was 16 feet. Chief McGee said it's got to be at least 20. And that was the change that I knew of. I'm not sure what was brought forward to you, but at stormwater level, it went from 16 to 20 feet wide. And that's when Chief McGee took a vehicle up there to show he could make the big swing going west on Rook, make a big swing to cross that culvert and enter the site. Specifically, I'm hearing, we're talking about the poles and Stormwater still has concerns about the modules, the panels that are in this, we believe the basin, we've been assured that when everything is explained and everything is in order and we can get that basin to properly drain, that those panels will not be in the basin per se. So that's still out there. Mr. Pilling, our health agent, is on vacation this week, that's why he's not here, but he has talked about that repeatedly. Batteries are off the table tonight, as far as I can see, and they certainly have never come before the Stormwater Committee. So specifically, the poles have been relocated, that's what we're talking about. What are the other issues that are before you tonight? Because how you decide on whatever issues there are depends on what the Stormwater Committee is going to do. If it's a minor modification and you agree on the poles and whatever else is considered minor, my committee doesn't have to do anything. Obviously, if there are issues that get approved tonight that we thought were minor, might require something, action on our part. So that's what I'm just specifically trying to determine. I know about the poles. As far as the entrance, the culvert, that has been worked out with the Stormwater Committee, the fire chief, so forth, so on. What else is on the table tonight in front of this planning board to consider as a minor modification and you're asking them to approve? Somebody? Other than poles, what are you talking about?
Would you like to stand up and respond?
Talking about the, remove, the removal of panels in the northwest section of the site itself, where those panels themselves are going to be reconfigured and put into the area of the basin, but not approaching on the basin itself within the buff zone.
And the inclusion, I think, of the containers.
And the inclusion of the containers outside.
Correct.
If I may, we're not talking about those containers at all. If your committee says the containers that will hold inverters would be approved by your committee, that's not a problem for us. The minute somebody says that you can add the batteries, we're going to say timeout. That's a problem, okay? So, as I said, because Mr. Pilling has brought up the location of those panels, that to me is an issue I didn't hear specifically addressed tonight, so.
Sure, again, Chris King with the land and design engineers. I guess just for clarity, the issues are that we would consider, I guess, minor, if you will, are really fourfold. Number one are the changes to the grading around the culvert that was installed. You know, just to recap, it was a 24-foot wide culvert originally proposed before you folks. There was an existing utility pole, the utility company, who normally requires that width, agreed to reduce that width to allow us to save the pole location. So we had done that, really in an effort to reduce the presence or the look, you know, the look of a head wall. Instead of chasing grade with a big concrete head wall, the decision was made to throw some riprap in there. The culvert still means the same openness ratios, bank distances, that are in accordance with D E P's stream crossing guidelines, which are really more appropriate under the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. This particular culvert doesn't catch any drainage leaving our site. It was done just sheerly from an access standpoint, and the size of it was really driven during the conservation review. And the amount of water that was actually submitted by the inverters that actually travels through their other high-intensity rain events, which rumor has it during original permitting comes from the development back line, that's here. The panels in the basin, you know, again, I would agree with what Mr. Goulart says that, you know, we're not looking for the board to make a decision on the batteries. It's really the containers. You know, we're still anticipating a review letter from either Mr. Pilling or the Stormwater Committee, specific to the batteries. And that will give us an opportunity to address any concerns he has specific to the batteries. From a stormwater standpoint, you know, we feel from an engineering standpoint that there are no changes here that are going to affect the site, the model, if you will. We developed the site from a stormwater standpoint, a raindrop that hits these containers. Number one, there were panels previously here. You know, the stormwater model, when a raindrop hits a panel, you model it as finally hitting the grass underneath, and that avoids these huge monstrosity of basins that you saw in some of the early solar projects before D E P issued that guidance. These containers were located in the panel area, they operate the same way, they're post-mounted. So a raindrop hits the top of these boxes, it trickles down, hits the grass below, and then goes to however many hundreds of feet of grass towards the stormwater basin. The panels in the basin, if you will, proper, I mean, the definition of a basin could vary. You know, we're tasked with modeling to a 100-year storm elevation. I know that we've been having more and more of them recently, but, you know, the fact, I guess the fact of the matter is the panels were always shown, let's say, within the basin, for lack of a better description. Our plan actually, there were panels shown within both stormwater basins. The basin out back, we're actually pulling the panels further outside of the basin. And, you know, the add here was just, again, it's, you're trying to maximize the efficiency of the roll runs as it relates to the inverters. It's math that I couldn't even begin to comprehend, but these panels were necessarily added to replace the batteries. This was just the final racking system that the rack and the structural engineers came up with, specific for this site. That being said, panels in a stormwater basin, they don't impact the basin's ability to function as designed, any kind of volumetric difference, because there's a couple more posts in the stormwater basin, it's negligible, not even tangible, when you start looking at how it affects the stormwater model. It doesn't take away any volume from that basin, if you will. What it really does is create more of a nuisance, and I use that term very loosely, from an operation and maintenance and installation standpoint. So this is not uncommon, there are pictures, I, you know, we can certainly provide them to the board, but it's not uncommon for wastewater treatment plants to mount panel rows over their clarifiers that are post-mounted. This is the same thing, and I'm sure they have operation and maintenance plans, so if they ever need to get under the panels and maintain them, there's a certain protocol that they follow, and the same holds true here. In this particular instance, as a design engineer, we designed these basins to be, you know, relatively larger than we normally would. That gives us the ability to spread it out so that under the lower frequency storms, particularly this two-year storm, and I doubt highly that someone will be out there maintaining this during a two-year storm event, the panels, I mean, the basins are designed during those low-frequency storm events, hold certainly less than a foot of water. So if you needed to get out there to do something, you still would have the ability to, without the fear of drowning in a basin that's four feet deep, if you will. And the panels are lifted, again, the racking is specifically designed for this topography, so, you know, the panels are designed not to be submerged, you know, within that basin. So for all intents and purposes, they are outside of the basin, if you will, from a water surface standpoint, so footprint extends into it. But again, it's not uncommon, and Grasshopper is certainly aware of that, in their operation and maintenance plan and protocol out there, you know, will reflect that. And, you know, again, we're going to be working with the Stormwater or Mr. Pilling, because again, we're anticipating, hopefully, multiple review letters in the near future so that we're able to address some of these concerns properly and put it on record. I know the hearing is, but it always helps to have some paper backup and, you know, as importantly, give you folks the information to give you that and hopefully make a, you know, a better decision, if you will.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Sure.
So I'm going to try to summarize this because I've obviously got to send this out to people who aren't here tonight. So it's not two issues, there are four issues. Changes in grading to the culvert, culvert side point, size went from 24 down to 20, which in our records indicate it went from 16 up to 20.
Correct.
The second one, the utility pole near the culvert, the utility company said that is okay. I think that was worked out by the Storm Committee, discussed at a site visit. Oh, and by the way, all our site visits have meeting notes. It's really not a specific meeting, but we do have those. And certainly, if you want information on site visits, just call into the Board of Health and ask for Mrs. Grassi, because all of our site visits have been approved right up to the last one we had, okay? The number three about the riprap instead of the wing walls, that was not a stormwater thing. Again, we were on site, we saw that. The steam, streamwater crossing, again, we didn't raise that issue. So again, getting back to what I said, I believe the main thing that would be before the Stormwater Committee is Mr. Pilling's question about specifically the panels. Now, you can say the panels aren't in the basin, but when we have pointed those out a couple of times, we were told the basin is not in its final form. That tells me there's going to be something done to the basin, modify it or whatever. One of the issues that Mr. Pilling has repeatedly raised is how are you going to maintain under the basins, excuse me, under the panels that are in the basin? Usually there's mowing of grass or things of that nature. That hasn't been answered because again, we were told the panels that are in the basin are not finalized. So we're waiting, show us, all right? Show us how you're going to do that. I know that there's been heavy equipment cleaning in the basin because of facilitation problem. And maybe when that's all done and the basin is finalized, those panels will not be in there. But until Mr. Pilling is satisfied and gets an answer to his question, that's still up in the air with the Stormwater Committee, which will not affect a decision you make because obviously, if we're all being told the panels will not be in the basin and you approve minor changes, and those panels are still not in a location that is appropriate as far as Mr. Pilling, Mr. Abhi, Stormwater Committee, we will deal with that. It's not going to remain if in fact, what we've been asking all along to be changed, fixed, repaired, whatever, is not done properly. So another thought is if you're going to act on this tonight, as far as minor modifications, please put conditions on it, especially that relate to the location of those panels in the basin. Because if everything comes out fine, we don't have a problem. But if it doesn't come out the way we think it should be, we've got something to act on because you had a, you added a condition, okay? So I think there's something to think about. We never said that panels in the basin affect the volume of the basin. And really, how can we make the statement when we don't know the final size, shape, whatever, of the basin? So that's really not relevant to this discussion tonight. Reference to wastewater treatment, again, not relevant. We're talking stormwater, we're talking stormwater management in the town of Dayton. And other than that, I haven't heard anything else here tonight that I think I need to bring to your attention because batteries are off the table, okay? So that's, if I hear anything else tonight, I'll put my hand up. I think that's pretty much a summary of where the Stormwater Committee is. And just for the general public, the Stormwater Committee, besides me, is made up of the highway superintendent, the building commissioner, chairman of the planning board, the chairman of the Board of Health, the health agent, and there's one more, there's seven in total. All of the major departments.
Mr. Pilling from Board Health.
Yes, health agent. All of the major departments in the town of Dayton are represented on that seven-member committee. In addition, we call on the police chief, the fire chief, the conservation agent, if we needed zoning, a mistake, Mr. we needed zoning, Mr. Agia, he's the building commissioner and zoning enforcement office. But if we needed other town officials with expertise, we would bring them in. So, anyone coming into the stormwater committee with a proposal, you hit just about every department in town, major department, that you would be in order to move forward. So, we're, we're a pretty cohesive group when it comes to the town of Dayton, and we try to make sure that everyone's, conservation commissioner, perhaps the chairman, I forgot. All of what is needed is in there, and that's why I say, when we talk stormwater in the town of Dayton, we're talking how it's done in the town of Dayton, because of the inclusivity of that committee. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart. I'd like to move on to public input. Are we having any public input this evening? Please identify yourself, you're getting dressed, please.
Lauren Boselay, 168 Pine Street, Brooklyn abutters. Took them all.
Alan Boselay, 168 Pine Street.
Thank you.
First of all, I just want to say that Mr. Agia asked that I remind you that he had a lot to say on the subject, and he was not able to be here, so he asked me to relay that to the board. In regards to the poles, there are three additional poles, not two, on the side, on the north side. I don't know why they're saying two, because it's three. The three that the utility company put in, and three that they put in. And do they make noise? Does anyone know if they make noise? Do they make noise? Mr. King?
I don't know.
Should someone know if they make noise? They're right on the side of our house. Should we know?
Of course we should.
Okay. So, utility company, did they, did anyone ever verify with the utility company? Mr. Rice, I think you said you asked for information from the utility company that you haven't even received yet.
Correct. We've seen no documentation.
And it could be that they said those poles need to go in because of the batteries. Maybe they don't need to be there if the batteries are not installed. So, without talking to the electric company, I just, you know, it doesn't even make sense without talking to the electric company first.
Oh, Mr. Chairman, if I may? I did receive an email that was forwarded to me from Grasshopper, from National Grid. It's not a plan, it's, or anything like that. It references those poles, and I would certainly forward it to Mrs. Easterday to get it to you, okay?
Why wasn't it sent to us also?
I had requested that at a stormwater committee meeting, and I said, I want documentation that something came from National Grid, and that email came in. I'm not sure when it came in, but that's all I have. If you're looking for plans, I don't have plans.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart.
And, Mr. Chairman, I think that's what you were referring to earlier, was we did see some correspondence with National Grid, that you were looking for the actual plans from National Grid and confirmation in writing from National Grid of what they were requesting to be done.
Correct.
Correct. So, yes, we have the same correspondence as Mrs. Goulart was...
An email.
An email.
Emails.
But what Mr. Chairman is requesting is the plans from National Grid and something official, official from National Grid stating, from their engineer, I believe, is what you're requesting.
Correct.
From National Grid's engineer stating the required, why they're requiring that. I'm sorry.
What we find is that they just continually do as they please and then ask for the permission, rather than ask for the permission. They want to beg for forgiveness first. As for the panels, they're closer to our house, they're, again, just put in. Everything was put in except for, I don't know what they would really be called, the panels themselves, they put in the parallel bars before anything was stopped, so they went that far with it. Like I said, it's closer to our house, easier to see from the road, which we have a bylaw, you're not even supposed to be able to see from the road. You're not supposed to be able to see this. So, it makes it more visible to the road.
The previous board, when we requested a larger buffer zone, said we have to abide by the bylaws, which was 50 feet. As Mr. King stated, the four million cheeseburger, you've been up there, you've walked the site, some scrub pines, very few, maybe 10 or 12 larger trees, more than visible, the wind whips through our backyard now, like I haven't seen in 40 years. There's nothing to block it anymore. So, if we have to abide by the bylaws for the 50-foot buffer, which we wanted more, then they should have to abide by our bylaws, where it shouldn't be visible, and whatever they agreed to in their first plan, right, should be adhered to. All these changes they're talking about is minor, are minor to them, not to us. We're right there, right? As I, at the risk of being redundant, I'll repeat the part of our property value with studies that say we're going to lose 7% to 10%. That was at the beginning with the inverters. That was with the inverters. Now add three telephone poles alongside ours, is that more depreciation? Now add seven containers, 20 feet long, eight feet wide, nine feet high, with lithium-ion batteries. Is that going to reduce our property value more? What, why is it costing us? We've been chased out of our home all summer long, we've had to leave because of the waste of dirt, the dust, 5:00 in the morning deliveries, right there in front of our home, equipment blocked off. We've paid the price. We shouldn't be continuing, continuing to pay for them.
Understood, Mr. Bosel. I know that a lot of the issues that you've expounded upon were erected as in deliveries, border John being entered at 5:00 in the morning, so on and so forth.
And I appreciate the board's input on that, and their direction on requirements that start at 7:00. I really do appreciate your due diligence in trying to help us. About the lithium-ion batteries, are you aware of the fire in Australia at the solar plant, the Tesla plant? Is anybody aware of that one? August 2nd of this past year? 30 pieces of fire apparatus, 150 firemen to fight it four days. 2019, several firefighters injured, one killed in Arizona, explosion of a lithium-ion battery container. This is what you want to put 500 feet away from my house.
I won't get into the batteries, only because I know you said you're not going to speak of the batteries tonight. I assume, because if you are, then we want to.
We're not going to speak on the batteries.
We're not speaking on the batteries, okay? In regards to the retention pond, oh, the basin, the basin, we, they are constantly pumping that basin. Now, I know there was silt in it, we're well aware of that. I know that they keep clearing and cleaning it up. You don't even have a clue what they do before they know someone's coming. You know, it's the old saying, when you know companies come and clean house? Well, they do. They've got everything out there pumping.
Let's please state the facts of what's in front of us right now. We don't want to have anyone be attacked or demeaned in any way. We're here to be...
I would like to say that I agree with Mr. Boselay, and I drive by there quite a bit, and I see exactly what's going on, and I understand where you're coming from.
No, I do, I'm not...
I don't know if you see my truck going by there, but, you know, the construction workers know my truck, because they keep saying, who's that guy?
I don't want it to be misconstrued by statement, no.
My point bringing that up is just because they're constantly pumping it, and so it's not giving a full idea of what that retention of the, what the basin is filling up into. And we're being told, from an engineer friend of ours, that it's never going to work. So, if you have panels on there, then you'll never get it to work, if you need to, if you find it doesn't work, if the panels are there. So, I am asking the board, please do not call this minor. Please, call this major. Do not allow this to pass tonight. I, I beg the board, please don't do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Boselay. Thank you. If we have one further comment on the public input, please identify yourselves, step to the board.
Leonard Hall, 760 Main Street, Dayton. Number of the Dayton, Board of Selectmen. I've heard Mrs. Boselay talk about expenses to them, impending expenses to them. My question to the planning board, and I don't know what type of an agreement you have reached with them in regards to impact fees, but apparently, this quote-unquote miscommunication has cost the town of Dayton additional hours and expenses, legal expenses, involvement who knows how many hours with Mr. Agia in expense, and the paperwork and what was required for that cease and desist order. I hope in your negotiations with this company, that there is an impact fee assessed for all these additional expenses.
Mr. Hall, I just want to make a statement that the town of Dayton does not have anything, anything under our bylaws that would be able to have an impact fee. I think that's something that the planning board is looking at to do in the future, to maybe present a warrant article for that meeting for impact fees. Right now, we just, we don't have that power of negotiation with impact fees.
I can kind of...
Because it's not under the MGLs, we just don't have that passed right now.
Thank you.
Any further comments from the public, Mr. Goulart, I would cut this very shortly here.
I just want to address the fees and cost of the town of Dayton. As part of the licensing permitting process for solar farms, there is a minimum of $50,000 bond that is decommissioning bond, so that when the time comes that the project is over, that money, if the property isn't revalued or anything, is removed from the property, and the town has to do it. That bond will be called, and the town will use that money to return that property to as near original condition as possible. And that means disposal of the panels and peripherals and all that other stuff. As far as cost to the town for legal issues, in the pilot agreement, there is reference to a $5,000 fee for every project, and that money is to reimburse the town for legal expenses, recording, things of that nature. The town employees involved in inspecting this do it all as part of their jobs. There aren't additional fees charged, excuse me, there aren't additional payments made to town employees to go out and do their jobs, no matter how many times they have to inspect. You might be talking about time management, but it's not additional costs. So, as far as the types of fees, and these are over and above, licensing fees, stormwater fees, building permit fees, you name them, the building commissioner with the decommission fee, and what is contained in the pilot agreement, which is the tax agreement that has that $5,000 clause. There is also provision in that, that each basin will have a bond, and I think it's $12,000 on this one. Again, the $12,000 will be used by the town of Dayton if the owner of the solar farm does not maintain the basins. So, we've made provisions for that.
Thank you. Chairman, we've had an opportunity to hear applicants in public inputs, in departmental comments that comes from the planning board members. At this time, I want to go back and just to recap that we voted on a motion to accept the proposals for engineering fees from Green International. So, at this time, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue this public hearing until November 17th.
I think they were asking before our site visit.
Yes, before we continue the public hearing, I'd like to see if we're going to have the opportunity to coordinate with the applicant to do a site visit. I'm available pretty much any day, except Tuesdays from 9:00 to 11:00, after 11:00 a.m. I can be available on Tuesdays and any other day of the week I'm using the town. What would have to happen is that if three or more members of the planning board are present for a site visit, we have to post a meeting, it has to be posted within 48 hours of the date of the site visit.
So, Friday would not work.
Please, please.
Is this, excuse me, is this something that other members are interested in partaking in, and so that we would be going on a public hearing meeting route, if you will?
I believe so, and I think that I'd also like to open this up to any of the members of the stormwater committee, if they like to be present at this water room, then we would be able to disseminate any information that we provided, now we stormwater should be able to just, you know, provide that to represent us.
And the fire chief.
Yeah, I was about to say, we would encourage as many town entities to join, the building inspector, the fire chief, anyone from stormwater, Mr. Pilling. You know, I think, I know time is of the, you know, valuable this evening, I won't get into all of it, but I think there were some things brought up that could be addressed on-site, and I think that Mr. Pilling would agree to and understand, just a temporary construction commitment.
I know that Mr. Woods is not available next week.
I mean, you could do it Friday if you don't have a quorum.
Correct.
Like, I, I'm not going. Who from this board wants to go?
Can I just see the mic? Just turn it off.
So, there's no need for a quorum, so site visits are an exemption from the open meeting law, so you could go without a quorum, you could go with a quorum, you're not to post, or you should announce when you're doing it, and then when you come back together, you should announce that you've done it. You can have multiple site visits for different members, so that's all fine, so you don't have to post. The only way, reason you would have to post is if people were using the site visit as a means to continue discussion of the public hearing. Now, if you're there just for fact gathering, like, hey, where's that basin going to be? Where's that pole going to be? Where are the battery terminals going to be? That's all fine, that's fair, that's fact gathering, no posting necessary, it's a complete exemption from the open meeting law. What we can't get into is that kind of back and forth where we're resolving things, it's just gathering the facts. Now, if the professionals are out there by themselves resolving things in discussion with Mr. Pilling, that's fine. The board can't be part of that, otherwise, we'd have to continue the public hearing to the site visit. So, it's just the facts. Hey, where's the lock horn? You know, those kinds of things. So, you don't have to be worried about forums or postings or anything like that, or 48 hours. Again, as long as you limit yourself to just understanding the center.
Thank you for that clarification, because I know that in the past, we've always, you know, gone by, you know, site visits and so on, and having to post, so, thank you for that clarification. As again, I'm available on Friday, I don't know who else would be available, Mr. Goulart?
Mr. Pilling and Mr. Agia do not work Fridays.
Correct, they're around town on Friday, so we have to, I'd like to see...
Friday is not a big day.
First week in November works, any day.
If you let us know, we're understanding the coordination effort involved on the town zone. If you were to give us a date that the majority of the people interested attending can attend as a project team, we'll make the effort to make sure that we have adequate representation out there, and if someone's not available in person, we could certainly make them available over the telephone, they could introduce themselves and let them, you know, their area of expertise, so that we can answer any questions that anyone has.
I'll have our office manager reach out.
All right, we appreciate that.
Why don't I, why don't I, because I have everyone's email, and I'll reach out to, especially the fire chief, the open commissioner.
If I may, full stormwater committee?
Yes.
Full stormwater committee, fire chief...
Full stormwater committee, fire chief, town administrator?
Yes.
And the chairman of the board of selectmen?
Yep.
If he's not available, he can designate one of the other selectmen. So if, he usually comes, he's usually in the loop, but those would be additional people.
I think we have the thread going already.
Yeah, I think so, thank you.
Is there enough line clear for all of us?
I think there are.
And just, please include Mr. Pilling as well, because again, based on what Mr. Goulart is saying, he has some questions regarding panels in the basin, if you will. But again, we've done testing in that location. I'm sure once we explain what we plan on doing, which in a site like this, you're constantly cleaning out bases. That's just the nature of an infiltration basin during construction. And again, it's a temporary condition that will be remedied. And at the end of the day, this thing will design as required, which required that it drains in seventy-two hours, according to the science standards, so the panels will not be located in an area that's inundated with water, if you will.
Mr. Chairman, I have a couple of questions.
Sure, Mr. Goulart.
Hi, I have a couple of questions, if I may. One is real easy, it's probably obvious to you, but it's not to us. Can you explain to us what's going on with telephone pole number five? It appears to be right to the middle of the panel.
Oh, that's a test pit, I'm sorry. Those are the, those were the soils, so when we first came, they were asking for permission to come back and do soil testing after the fact. The planning board really, you know, toed the line and made us, and then Mr. Pilling as well, made us do the testing ahead of time, so we weren't wasting their time for designing what was valid. So we did that, and in particular in the area of the basin, which, you know, should, so it's conducive.
So the six poles either side of the road are, I'm, I'm looking at drawing three. I don't know if that shows on that one or two.
Yeah, two is probably a better scale, but you have one, you probably can't see that. But you have one here?
Yep.
Two, three, four, five, six. Again, it splits the utility and the customer. Again, I'm not an electrical engineer, but these are, the equipment on these poles are either meters, which is the same meter, similar to you have in your house, and they're GOABs or gas-operated air brakes. It's where the system can make the disconnect, whether it be the utility or the customer side. They're not pull-out to transformers that can typically see. Someone asked if they make noise, I don't know. I won't claim to know, but my inkling is that they do not make audible noise if you're standing below them.
Could we find out, sir?
We can, so, again, that's on my list of information that you've requested this evening, along with some other things, and we're gonna work to provide the information to you to hopefully answer some of the questions that were raised this evening.
The rest of those circles on the drawing appear to be fence posts, is that true?
Yes, that's just the line type for the fence post here around the perimeter. Gets a little confusing when they get close to the poles, but the poles are on the south side of the road proper, if you will, right on the shoulder.
And one more question with regards to shielding from the properties to the north.
Yes.
I'm, I'm looking on drawing number C-TAC three dot zero, which specifically talks about erosion control. But on the top right there, that drawing points out the twenty-foot-wide forest enhancement area. See details on sheet C-TAC four dot zero. Are you saying that in addition to shrubbery shown there?
Yes.
Left, that there's going to be something called a twenty-foot-wide forest enhancement? Can you talk about that?
Sure. I don't have the detailed document in front of me, but as part of the original approval, we had come up with a series of plantings and species and spacing and kind of a narrative. It's more of a, instead of showing specific plant numbers, understanding you're not gonna have a hole everywhere where you show up the anchor plant. It's more of like a, intended to be a character representation of that strip. And the idea is, again, Mr. Boselies brought up, that you could see clear through it. And so the idea is, in addition to the standard green giant deer-resistant arbor varieties that we have a road, break up that look and soften and understanding the surrounding area. You know, I think we've gone above and beyond and agreed to plant some native species, forest species, that are more the coniferous type that will provide year-round screen, particularly during the non-faulier months, when you can see clear through it.
So it's why you're saying that's not there yet?
That's correct. So, you know, yes, you can see the project from the road now. And once all the landscaping is installed, when it's appropriate to install, and I believe this is a pollinator site, so, you know, there's another element to this project, I think, that's even an added benefit, which is just specific to the seeding, where, you know, there's a certain time that they want you to plant everything to maximize its efficacy and establishment, if you will.
So right now, the only thing present is what's on the draw here, the, the acrobodies right now in place, none of that extra twenty-foot visual areas, and how do we handle it?
There's been no.
There's no, so there's no landscape installed right now. I'm not permitting it, right? There's no landscape installed now. You know, now isn't the best time to plant. But, you know, again, the idea is, you know, the last thing these guys wanna do is plant in the middle of summer. So I would guess, I'm not previous to the schedule specifics, that I would think that they would try to get everything in in the planting season earlier in the year, rather than later. Especially now that a lot of the heavy lifting and mechanical work has been completed, so.
Yeah, we would have said in the documents, just when you plant, you'll see a plant agent that will list all of the tree species and so on.
Yeah, it's here on C-four, C-TAC four zero, at the bottom of. Okay, that's all I have, thank you very much.
Any other questions with the board? Hearing done, we're to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing until November seventeenth.
Same. And then, I'm sorry to interject in the middle of your motion, but would the next hearing be the November third?
That's a scheduled meeting day for the board itself, but we're gonna schedule off to seventeen because we believe that, I believe that a peer review engineer will not be able to give confirmation in two weeks back to us.
Okay.
That's the reason why we wanna stretch it out and go until the seventeenth.
Sure, and again, just for clarity, and I don't mean to belabor the issue, but again, that speaks more to our request to bifurcate, if you will, the two issues, because we feel that, you know, hopefully, you know, again, I don't wanna speak for Ms. Goulart, but hearing her speak, it seemed like the stormwater committee at least was okay with some of the changes. There still was a question regarding the basin, the panels in the basin that Mr. Pilling brought up. You know, I would certainly, we would certainly be in a manner.
Correct, sir. What I wanted to bring to this point is that the stormwater committee will not be able to act unless they see an updated set of plans and things have been approved by the planning board first. Because we're gonna end, end up making our decision and then the information before the stormwater. We don't wanna jump the gun, send everything to stormwater first, have them make approvals, and then things may change down the road on the set of plans. Because it's happened, it's happened, and it may happen again.
Sure.
Okay, so we wanna be cognizant of that fact. I know this, I would personally.
I agree with the chairman.
Motion's been made in second.
Any further discussion on the motion? Hearing done, gentlemen, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Any extensions that motion carries? We will have our office manager reach out to all the entities involved, stormwater committees of all, the fire chiefs, which if needed, myself, with the member of the planning board, any members would like to be present at the next site visit. And we'll have Mrs. East today will reach out, and I'm sure that, you know, we'll get up there, we'll get things looked at. I was up there personally today, this is, I wanna say this completely off the record, I was there this, this afternoon, okay? And I looked at the first basin at the northeast side of the, of the array, okay? Right now, it, it is, it seems to be drying out, okay? They've removed quite a bit of the silt. On your rear basin on the southeast corner of the site, I made a recommendation to the project managers that you should, because your discharge pump was running and it was just sucking in, and all the water was pooled down in that southeast corner. So I think that just the recommendations, I worked the trash for many years of my life, I think that that backhoe should get in there, get on top of that burner, and try to just, just, just scratch out of those trenches, the water was draining and is being pumped out properly. Now, the silt bag itself is working, there was not a problem. That's what I saw. I cannot speak for anyone from conservation, but these are just only my observance, that's it. So with that being said, gentlemen, we have voted to continue the public hearing until November seventeenth. Mrs. East today, our office manager will reach out to all the parties involved, and we'll set the second. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you for everyone coming out this evening. If you'd like to stay, we're gonna continue the meeting. And I'm going to go to agenda item number four C, and that's the public hearing continues for Forest Hills Estates special, the Max Conservation Center, Zero Forest Street, map three, lot twenty-eight, numbers thirty-three and seventy-eight. I'd like to read this thing into the record, an email received, Mr. Joshua Glass. This is to Gary East today, our office manager. The subject is Forest Hills, the planning board meeting of Wednesday, October twentieth. And this email will be seen Monday, October eighteenth of twenty twenty-one at seven thirty-nine a.m. in the morning. Mrs. East today, in follow-up to our discussion last week, we respectfully request on behalf of the applicant that this man be continued to the planning board's next meeting. We should be clear of household quarantine and isolation requirements by that time. Thank you for your understanding. Please also communicate my personal appreciation to the board for some anticipated understanding of the matter. Thank you for your time and attention to this matter, Mr. Joshua Glass. Gentlemen, I'm going to entertain a motion to continue the public hearing for Forest Hills. We're gonna have them on, you know, November fifth to the seventeenth. Until November seventeenth?
Twenty twenty-one to six p.m.
So that's the motion. Motion's been made in second to continue the public hearing for Forest Hills. Any further discussion on the matter? Hearing done, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Any extensions that motion carries? Thank you, gentlemen. At this time, I'm going to move on to agenda item number five, and that is the speed of approval of the meeting minutes of September fifteenth of twenty twenty-one.
Thank you, motion to approve of that.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion on the approval of the meeting minutes of September fifteenth? Hearing done, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed? Any extensions that motion carries? Mrs. East today, we have any correspondence for this month? Public inputs? We have, do we have any public input for this evening? Mrs. Goulart?
Just a comment for Mrs. East today. When we've done these site visits before, one in the afternoon has worked. And in looking at my calendar, November one, two, three, look pretty good. There's a department head meeting on the third, but it's in the morning, so one o'clock might work. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Goulart.
Hi, Dave Maba, one oh two Forest Street, speaking as a voter, you know, landowner of Forest Street. Can you just tell us what they mean by continue? Because sometimes I get people to say, what's going on with Forest Street project? And I say, it's on hold or whatever. So what is going on with them anyhow, when they say continue? They're still trying to get their backs together, what they wanna do, or?
Correct, the applicant is still gathering information with his engineers to present to the planning board, so they can be coming in front of us. And then what we would do is, we would take in his packets, take it under advisement, get an opportunity to look at it, bring the applicant in front of us. And of course, you know, we step it off to our peer review engineers, or we go to the stormwater committee, or go to conservation. So all the entities and departments would have an opportunity to look at it. And we would make our review and comments and, you know, set any conditions if we have to. But there has been a, not a formal decision by a judge, but a recommendation was done twelve years ago, and it was discussed and entertained by both sides. We have that decision. The applicant seems to feel that he's ramped up a certain items within that decision, but now with Stormwater being the new MGL that's out there, the Massachusetts General Office of the people out there in the public, is that, that committee, and the reason why it was set up is that it's a major concern, because we have a lot of runoff, this, you know, going down into a lot of rivers and tributaries, what is leading into the Ton River, which leads into the Madger Bay, which of course, you know, where it goes further. So I'm honored to be a representative of the planning board to serve that committee, because we do get a lot of things done.
All right, thank you for your answer, I appreciate it. All right, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, you're welcome. If we have no other further public inputs, judgment is a reminder, we are back to a normal schedule. Our next meeting day will be November third at six p.m. I believe we will be meeting at Old Town Hall, if otherwise, we will be notified if we're not.
Do you know if hybrid meeting is available, would you go on the third and the seventeenth?
Seventeenth, yes.
So hybrid is possible for both, is that right?
As long as we're seventy on Hall.
Okay, excellent.
So gentlemen, if there's no other further business in front of the planning board this evening, I'm going to entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion has been made, is there a second? Motion been made in second by Mr. Goulart. Any further discussion to adjourn, hearing done, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any extensions that motion carries? Thank you, president of the town of Dayton, we look forward to seeing you on the November third. Thank you, people, as always.